County Commission work session, we're gonna delay starting for just a little bit, we're waiting on one more guest to arrive. So if you're listening online, give us another couple of minutes here and we'll get started. Afternoon and welcome to the four o'clock work session for the Douglas County Commission. Today's work session is a discussion with our regional experts on energy demand and opportunities. As a reminder to the public and those folks here at the courthouse, which is also the public. This meeting is, this portion of our meeting is, is for information only. We don't do any action during our work sessions or take public comment. If you do have public comment about any of the topics here at our work session, you're welcome to join us at our 5:30 business meeting to share those comments. So with that, I will turn it over to Sarah to introduce our guests and kick this off.
Actually, I'm just gonna turn it right over to the team. So Kim or, and we can introduce and get started. And you will have to turn on these microphones and kind of speak into them. So you, you can have mine here.
Thanks, Sarah. Commissioners, Kim Criner Ritchie, Sustainability Manager for Douglas County. We're fortunate to have, we're fortunate to have three guests with us today who will introduce themselves to help us have a high level exploratory discussion about the evolving future of energy generation and considerations for our local communities as we balance the demand for reliable, affordable and clean energy. So I will let them take it away. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Donna Ginter. I am an economist and I direct the Institute for Policy and Social Research at KU. And we've been working on the economic impact of renewable energy developments in the state.
And hello, my name's Jake Halbus. I'm a geologist, the director of the Kansas Geological Survey and also serve as the State Geologist of Kansas. I should say by way of background, I'm very new to Kansas itself. I came from 16 years prior to this, working for ExxonMobil actually in the oil industry. And so I'm, I'm new to the Kansas power sector, but hopefully bring some relevant information today.
Thank you. My name is Ashok Gupta. I'm with NRDC, Natural Resources Defense Council. I've been with NRDC thirty some years, twenty years in New York and ten years here in the Kansas City area and work on electricity policy issues in both Missouri and Kansas. Look forward to the conversation today.
Sorry, I'd like to say just a brief thank you for being here. This was kind of something that I've been looking for is just a way to have some larger discussions about what is the future of energy generation that likely doesn't look like the past? And, and how do we start having kind of some broad discussions so that when we have more specific discussions about projects that are interested in Douglas County that we have a context for that? It's also one of the few chances for us to have a public discussion, the three of us commissioners together about a topic as critical as this. So I just thank you for each of you being here, realize that this is not part of your regular job and that this is something you're doing to help us out and have these conversations. My hope is that this is a first conversation of, of, of many, whether you choose to be involved with us moving forward or not, but just to give us a place to start asking questions. So I want to thank you for your work, for being here and I can let you take it away.
Happy to switch it over to the PowerPoint now if that would help, help. Okay, great. Don't know. Let me just make sure that your audience can see this. So I'll share. Is it okay if I share? Okay, perfect. I'm gonna try to flip the slides from here. The, the slides are intended to, let me test this, see first of all, if I can actually flip them from here. Okay, great. The slides are really intended to, to help us to, to aim conversation. I've got some notes here. I've also got a pack that, that I think Kim has, that has pages and pages and pages of, of material information for you. And this is really to set the scene for global transitions in energy, sort of the state of play today. I integrated some information from the oil industry as well as from a number of different sources that really comment on energy utilization, power utilization. We'll go back and forth between different types of fuel sources. So we'll go back and forth between hydrocarbon fuels, renewable fuels, clean fuels. And I even put in a little bit at the very end about hydrogen, just because I'm, I'm the chair of the, the Hydrogen Development Committee. And, and so I, I can't finish a conversation right now without talking about hydrogen. So with that, I'll kind of kick things off. What I thought we would try to do is, is spend, I don't know, twenty or so minutes talking about giving sort of a technical perspective on some of the current and projected allocations of different types of energy. I thought we would talk about the transportation sector and make sure that we're all clear and that our, our questions are answered about transportation sector uses of energy versus electrical generation sector. We'll also kind of fit in and talk about industrial use of, of energy in that. We'll talked about, about regional as well as national and global electrical demands and, and some of the national trends. Very much hope that this is conversational. So please, please stop me if, if you want to kind of ruminate on something. I'm gonna start with an uber complex diagram, but I, I really think it's a lovely way of demonstrating what's, what our energy usage is, what our energy consumption is. I'll, I'll use this to, this is called a Sankey diagram. This is developed by Lawrence Livermore National Laboratories. They actually make these types of diagrams, which are very useful for demonstrating the, the differences between, on the left side, the amount of energy that's consumed and by what sector, or I'm sorry, produced and by what sectors. So this is solar, nuclear, hydroelectric, wind, geothermal, and then moving down to the bottom half, there's natural gas, coal, biomass and petroleum. They make these Sankey diagrams both for the US consumption as well as state by state, although not all the states are updated all the way to twenty one data, twenty twenty one data. The unit's sort of funky one, so they talk about here ninety seven point three quadrillion British thermal units, BTUs. If, if you're like me, you know, no one knows really what a BTU is. In this case, I'm, I'm translating that over to gigawatt hours. So you can sort of see a big number there. It's a lot of US, US energy consumption. And then just for, for utilization here, about thirty five hundred BTUs is equal to about a kilowatt hour. If, if, if that means something to you. So the left-hand side is the, the estimated energy that we produce. And then you move with a flow diagram basically to the right-hand side and it, and it shows where those fuel sources, those diverse fuel sources move into electricity generation, where they contrast with, and then sort of ultimately where the electricity generation goes to. So industrial uses, commercial uses, residential uses, which of course we're used to. Going again from the left-hand side, there's also a differentiation of, for example, where natural gas goes into directly into that industrial processes. And then we can make the same comparisons with biomass and petroleum products where, for example, oil moves into industrial uses. And it also has a split, of course, with transportation. We're very used to that. And we'll talk more about these sectors. And we'll, we'll, we'll make some points about each of them. I will say that it's important to note that all of the clean energy here, so solar, nuclear, hydroelectric, wind, geothermal, all of the clean energy sources on this diagram effectively go to electricity generation. All of the biomass and petroleum, so in this case, think of petroleum as oil. All of the oil here goes to transportation and industrial uses. Note that coal goes to electricity generation only effectively. And that natural gas is the one that splits. So natural gas, a bunch of it goes to electricity generation. That's a growth sector within the United States and globally. And that part of the natural gas that we use splits and goes directly to industrial processes. Actually, hydrogen, natural gases is the primary use or feedstock for hydrogen production. Jake, can, can you, I'm ignorant of what biomass is and what that looks like. Yeah, sure. Biomass, I don't know a whole lot about it, but biomass is effectively growing materials that then become, are directly used as fuel. So growing grasses, growing.
Heck of ethanol.
The other thing that's, that's I think fascinating about this type of diagram, the Sankey diagram, is that it shows on the far right-hand side, the amount of used energy versus the amount of waste energy. And so this becomes sort of a jaw drop of how much of our energy is, is wasted, both out of the electrical generation sector. So about sixty five percent is, is, is wasted or rejected. About thirty five percent is actually utilized. And then you can see similar comparisons across transportation, industrial uses.
So just to add quickly, I mean, this goes to the thermodynamic efficiency issues, which is really how much of any energy can be usefully used and how much is waste heat. So in a power plant, a coal plant, any natural gas plant, a third of it is about useful use, two thirds wasted in combustion and vehicles. So what you're seeing here is just how you can translate, how can you use energy and turn it into useful energy? It's just the way, you know, first law of thermodynamics works and the second law of thermodynamics works.
So I was gonna say, most of that rejected energy is heat. I imagine some of that is also line loss for electricity. So, okay.
It's mostly heat, but some.
You got it. No, no, that's, hey, that's perfect. So Sankey diagram, we'll come back to this again. I wanna, I wanna zoom out a little bit away from US production. But I, I do again, kind of want to emphasize the couple of points that our, our clean energy sources go into electrical generation, our natural gas sources are split into chemical feedstocks and electric, coal, all electric, and then our, our transportation and industrial sectors, those are fueled by petroleum products right now, by and large. That's gonna change. It's gonna change with global trends. But when we're talking about electrification, I want to make it clear and, and, you know, sometimes there's a confusion about different energy types. When we're talking about electrical generation capacity, we're by and large not talking about oil and gas. This is a diagram from my alma mater. This is from the energy outlook that's put out every year by, by ExxonMobil Corporation. And so I'm, I'm kind of being convenient here in that, in that I know these data and I, I know something about the, the, the production of it. The world today uses, so, so this is looking at a, a projection through time from the year two thousand through the year twenty fifty on, on the right-hand side. This is just their model. It, it looks deterministic in the language that I've quoted from them in your, in your packets that, that you'll receive. It's very deterministic. It says, this is what the world will look like. This, of course, is, is, you know, one set of models. They, they try to be very careful to build it from, from a lot of very reputable sources. But this is just one set of models. However, I think it's useful for illustrating some, some important concepts that are, that are certainly fact-based and not just model-based. So right now, the world uses, we, we use something on the order of globally about four hundred and seventy five quadrillion BTUs today. The, the energy growth is, is gonna grow in multiple different sectors. Electrical energy generation is gonna grow. Industrial is going to grow. It's gonna stay similar for a while and then it's gonna grow rapidly. Residential and commercial use is gonna stay about the same. However, we're getting much more efficient in, in the United States. But we're also gonna be bringing on many, many countries are gonna have access to, 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 to affordable access to energy. The other thing to note, of course, is the population is growing rapidly. So as we grow, those, those folks need access. So we end up rising in this model in, in twenty fifty to about six hundred and sixty quadrillion BTUs by twenty fifty. The other things to notice, commercial transportation is expected to grow. So again, think about commercial transportation, that's gonna be, and I've got a breakdown of this in a moment, that's gonna be oil and gas and diesel. Unless we, we change those fuel sources. So the hope is that, that we'll be able to diversify. Heavy transportation, light transportation is already well along that path. Global, global energy consumption though continues to shift proportionally to developing economies. So we know that that's gonna happen. And I'll say that, you know, this model suggests that developing countries will account for one hundred percent of global energy demand growth through the, through the, the twenty, twenty teens and, and up through twenty fifty. This is also in your packet. This slide breaks down then the global changes again on a time scale from twenty, from two thousand to twenty fifty. And this is projection of how different fuel sources are, are going to change over time. So a couple of note, things to note. Oil, so we're right here right now. You can see that the COVID, the COVID drop in oil in, in the twenty twenty timeframe. Oil is expected to, to continue to rise utilization and then it will start to plane off, table off. Natural gas utilization in this model is expected to continually rise linearly for the time span of the model itself. Coal is in orange here and coal utilization is expected to peak soon and, and, and then start to, start to decline globally. Electrical generation, electrical use in total is here in this, this gray stippled line. It's expected to grow steadily from, from now through, through the model timeframe. You'll also see that, that a, a tide curve effectively is the growth of wind and solar generation as well as, as well as I'm excited to say hydrogen in this case. So you can see these, these global changes on the bars on the right, you can see that, that coal utilization is going to steadily decrease. Again, that's, that's reflected in the curve, in the curve as well. One thing to say again is that, that oil is expected, oil demand is expected to, to remain for a long period of time. That's because we again, use oil and heavy transportation. We also use it for a range of different industrial processes and chemical processes. That's illustrated by these curves. Again, these curves show the, the breakup in million oil equivalent barrels per day of, of use. And they show the utilization of, of energy and, and essentially mobility is driven right now by our, by our oil generation and by our oil fleet. So you can see a, a peak in oil demand for light vehicles in the twenty twenty five to twenty thirty timeframe. But that peak is not ameliorated because we, we, or I should say it is ameliorated because we have heavy duty aviation growth and marine growth all, all over that same period of time. As far as diversification of our light vehicles, so this is a, a graph that shows the, the number of, of vehicles on the road today. And what it does is it shows the, the change that, that could be expected over the twenty fifty timeframe. So you can see a steady decrease in the amount of vehicles that are gonna require gasoline on the road today. And this is global, by the way. And then you can see a, a supplanting of that, although there are gonna be more cars on the road, will have many more electric plug-in and dual cell vehicles. And then this is how that, that same fleet translates in million oil equivalent barrels per day in, in the modeled literature. Again, just trying to separate out the different types of fuels. This is just a glimpse of how we utilize our petrochemicals, our, our hydrocarbons in a range of different chemical, heavy industry, agricultural and asphalt and lubricate, lubrication, lubes and, and energy industry itself. So effectively, this is, this is all feedstock from hydrocarbon fuels right now. Just a word, because we're wrapping up the oil part of the conversation, I, I do want to kind of comment a little bit on oil and gas in, in Kansas. So oil has been around in Kansas for a long, long time. So we have about a four hundred and thirty thousand wells have been drilled in the state since the eighteen eighties. There are a number of major trends within the state. So many are gonna be familiar with the large oil and, with the large gas field called the, the Hugaton Oil Fields in the southwestern part of the state. We have active gas exploration there, active oil exploration in the central part of the state along structural highs and then in the eastern part of the state along structural highs as well as in coal bed seams. So that's called coal bed methane. So that's a source of natural gas throughout the state. With the exception, however, of some short spikes in the, the eighteen, in the nineteen eighties and the twenty teens, this is the oil curve, oil production from the state of Kansas itself from eighteen ninety to twenty twenty. With the exception of a couple of short spikes, the, the oil production rate from the state of Kansas has been declining steadily. The gas production rate similarly has been declining steadily. We, we did have, you know, production in the, in the Hugaton Field that's out in, again, in southwestern Kansas. That created a spike in the, in the nineteen nineties into the early two thousands. But we've really not seen the, the revolution of unconventional production that, that much of the rest of the country has seen. Can you talk a little bit about why we see that spike and why that goes down? Is that demand? Is that how it's created? Yeah. Yeah, I think that, that that's really a, a, a demand spike. So, so there was significant demand in, in the nineteen fifties, nineteen sixties and into the early nineteen seventies. Technology was also not a, was, was not a a, a barrier for us. So in other words, we were able to use the same technology here in the state of Kansas that we were able to use in Pennsylvania, in Texas and, and offshore and on the Gulf Coast. Or similar technologies. Kansas's reservoirs, however, don't really lend themselves to long horizontal drilling and, and hydraulic fracturing the same way that, for example, Texas and North Dakota do. So we've not seen that, that, that resurgence. Instead, we, we drill vertical wells here in thin reservoirs that are usually under pressured. And so we have to use the pump jacks to, to pull the, pull the hydrocarbons out.
So those new technologies you said that are not being used as much in Kansas were what you said, that horizontal drilling and the fracking. So fracking is one that people have heard about a lot. And we have, of course, the, uh, oil, uh, gas fields in southern part of Douglas County. And so that did get a lot of interest for a while when they were looking at, at, at those practices here, but I'm not sure that that's panned out.
Yeah. And, and you know, it's not to say that there isn't hydraulic fracturing going on around the state, but it's, it's not the, the very large wells, very large fracs that are used in, in some of the other large fields. Yep, Oklahoma, Texas, et cetera, North Dakota. So they're, they're not gonna let me talk anymore about oil and gas. I, I have to move on to, to power. That's right. So now we get to, to, to some of the other interesting parts. So back to the Sankey diagram, this is the US, the US curve again. I do want to kind of say a couple of words about the electrical generation and, and at the utility scale. So about sixty one percent or so of, of our electrical generation in twenty twenty one, that's by the way, four point one trillion kilowatt hours in the US. About sixty percent of that came from hydrocarbons, came from coal effectively and natural gas. Nineteen percent was from nuclear generation, twenty percent was from the, the other collection of renewable sources. I'll say that there's an additional about fifty billion kilowatt hours of generation from small-scale photovoltaics. So those would not be the utility scale generation. Those would be smaller scale generation.
Distributed generation.
Yeah. So that's about, that's about another fifty billion kilowatt hours. So four point one trillion kilowatt hours from utility scale and then about fifty billion kilowatt hours from, from a small scale photovoltaics.
A small fraction.
Yeah, a small fraction. That's right. Nuclear, let's talk nuclear for a moment. So, oh, and I should say, I'll, I'll make a point really quickly that US houses on average use around ten thousand kilowatt hours annually. So about ten thousand kilowatt hours would be, would be as a single house. So nuclear, thirty two company, thirty, thirty two countries produce nuclear energy for, for commercial and residential use. It's about ten percent of the global electrical generation capacity. The US is the largest producer in terms of, of gigawatt hour. So we, we produce seven hundred, seven hundred thousand gigawatt hours from nuclear.
The diagram you had before, which was projecting into the future of different segments of energy generation and nuclear was nearly the same in twenty fifty as it was in the past. Is that regulation wise? Can you talk to that? You'll probably get into that anyway.
Yeah. And do you want to comment?
I mean, I think the growth of nuclear will be tied to economics, of course. And so it's really, can it compete with other sources? And in countries where you're still seeing a lot of new nuclear plants like in China and in Asia, it's government building those plants out. So it's a question for the US and elsewhere is gonna be how much it's gonna cost and who will build them. And that's gonna be part of the equation as we go forward to see what resource, what generation can compete when people are out there trying to buy new power. And so we don't mean, so globally, there'll be some growth. In the US, there'll be some shutdowns. And it could be very hard for new nuclear to compete and investors are not likely to invest, but we can come back to that. But generally, if you're looking at projections globally as these charts show, it'll stay flat, there'll be some build out, but it's not like we're gonna go above ten percent globally. And if we stay at twenty percent in the US, you know, we'll see if we can stay at twenty percent.
And so that would be not competitive by cost is the most expensive energy generation currently. Is that correct?
Yes, it's a short answer. I mean, clearly. Yeah.
And as Ashok said, so, well, I should say China is the fastest growing nuclear producer. France is the largest by percentage. They produce about seventy percent of their electrical generation comes from nuclear. We're gonna say a bunch about coal in a little bit. What I will say is that, that, yeah, we'll, we'll say, we'll say a little bit more about coal and, and just a little bit. See, let me catch back up. This is a, a curve. These are EIA data. I'm gonna switch to, to several articles that, that you have in your packets as well. Yeah, you bet. Sorry. This is, this is material and, and I'm gonna show a series of, of articles from the, from the EIA. So this article is talking about US energy intensity dropping off. So what this means is that we're, our, our intensity is improving. That means our efficiency is improving. It varies state by state. So this is tied effectively to how many BTUs are you using per dollar of produced, of produced material? And they call it chained dollars. I don't know if that's effectively like a GDP measure. It's real dollar. So what this is showing is that, you know, for the last, for the last seventy years, the US has, has seen precipitous improvements in its energy intensity. That does differ though, depending on whether you're an industrial state, whether you're an agricultural state and, and then how that state is evolving its economy over time. Whether, for example, those industrial processes are actually moving, moving out of state and you're moving into more of a consumer state or sales state, then, then obviously your energy intensity equation is gonna change precipitously.
With another question there. So in terms of manufacturing, so the US exported a great deal of manufacturing and manufacturing jobs. And now there may be an intention to bring some of that back. Maybe we went too far with it. Will that also impact our energy use and energy efficiency?
Yes. Yeah, man, it's an input, right? You're gonna need energy for the new Panasonic plant or the new chips plant that's big bandy to about, right? So there's, there's going to be increased energy demand for manufacturing to the extent that we can reassure it. Okay.
I'll say a couple of words about transitions in coal. And so, you know, a couple of words here and then, and then again, you've got, you've got article for you. This is again from the EIA. So coal plants retire when the cost of. So coal plants retire when the cost of operations exceeds the the revenue or revenue expectations. Also, coal plants will 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 be retired when the regulatory framework is put in place that that puts them out of commissioner starts to transmit and transition those plants. So it's it's a it's a combination of when is the plant itself becoming obsolete? Do you make retrofits or do you transition the plant over? And then and then cost effective, cost effective planning and and cost efficiency of the plant itself.
Jake, can you talk about transition it over to what from coal to what?
Yeah, so and I'll I'll show a picture that that hits home in just a minute. That's actually a video. So there's a there's a interactive part of this in in just a moment. If I can get the video to work, but it's of my living room during during Winter Storm Yuri a couple of years ago. So I'll talk about transitions. So transitions in this case mean if if they're not going to 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 continue on with the coal plant. Do they retrofit the the plant itself with natural gas burning? Do they retrofit the get the the plant with natural gas with ammonia or hydrogen flow streams? Do they switch over to some combination of interconnects with more diverse clean energy sources? So, for example, do they do interconnects with wind and solar to backstop a reduction of the coal plant? Or are you taking the coal plant off offline altogether? We'll talk about intermittency issues and we'll talk about sort of concept of of concepts of base load here in in a little bit. Coal plants, you you can't turn them on and turn them off. You you have to pull them back slowly. You you don't want to kind of turn them on and off very quickly. And but they are very useful from a from a base load perspective. And the the those plants have been in place.
Good. And that's not the case with natural gas. Is that correct? That that is easier to turn on and off more so than coal?
That's my understanding.
Yes, it depends on the there are some natural gas plants that are more baseload and you don't want to turn them on off, but there are peaker plants that are more like jet engines that you can turn off. So when you're talking about building up the supply, you're talking about baseload, coal, nuclear, different types of natural gas plants to deal with shoulders and then peekers. Which are really like jet engines that you can really turn on and off. And so you just have to kind of build up to the demand curve and figure out all the sources that get you to that. And as we add more and more wind and solar, that figuring out what is going to be operating and when and how do you fill in the demand curve becomes complicated and it's tied to economics, of course, in terms of what you want to be operating. But yes, so natural gas plants will continue to be in the middle to help you deal with demand as it grows during hot days, cold days. And when wind is available at night and solar during the day. So what the Southwest Power Pool does is kind of back mix and match all of these different sources to meet demand with changes hour by hour, day by day, season by season. And that's are you coming up to that? I know.
And and Ashok, you visited our Evergy plant here just to give context for people here. Who may be thinking about what is our plan? It is a mixture of coal and gas. Is that correct?
Yes, it's a dual fuel plant and the plan is to stop burning coal at that plant, but only burn natural gas at the plant because it is one of those plants you can burn either fuel, but it takes time to switch from one to the other. But by going to natural gas only, it'll you won't have to spend days figuring out how to transition. And we'll come back to that later when we talk about storage at that site and other things to do with renewables.
Perfect. So a couple of different perspectives, a couple of different perspectives graphically about retirements of coal plants and and what that pace looks like. I really like this graph. This just shows time on the X axis. And and then numbers, I think on the Y axis, this shows the size of the generation capacity. And and then this is, oh, I'm sorry, this is years years in service at retirement. And then the the line here shows the annual capacity of the weighted average years in service at retirement. So what this shows to me is that we have a large number, an increasing number of plants that are being being retired right now. And that those plants have a larger capacity with time. And then we're starting to see now a tick up in the 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 average years in service at retirement. Okay, let's see if if I don't know if I can play this. No, let me hop up. Yeah, there you go. I won't worry about sound, but it it sounded awful.
First pipes.
These are burst pipes. Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's my that's my 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 breakfast room. Yeah. Why? Why did that happen? Well, this was in Houston, Texas. It happened during during February of twenty twenty one. It happens because we have a house that's set up for summertime, not set up for wintertime, and it's poorly it was poorly insulated. We had exposed pipes and at the same time, we had some failures in our in our electrical generation fleet and our transmission fleet and throughout the state that that didn't quite keep up with demands. And this is to make the point that, and I'll make this point a little bit later on as well. Generation, electrical generation is really tricky because you I I love the truck analogy. It's it's like building a truck fleet that has to be big enough for the the biggest capacity day. But you may only have that day once a year or once every five years. The rest of the time, you're only using one truck, but you have to have fifty trucks online because you're going to need them for one day. And that's the same way with our electrical generation fleet. We have to plan for the coldest colds and the hottest hots and have that ready to go.
Oh, is it also that Texas was its own? It was in also the case that Texas is own grid. And so they couldn't when their capacity fell during that storm, they couldn't buy power from anybody else.
Yeah, I I think it's a mix of things that so number one interconnectedness of the grid matters a whole bunch. We're going to talk about the Southwest Power Pool. I've got some some information for you compiled. I think it's about that. I think they they transitioned a lot of coal fired power plants to natural gas. But they did not transition those natural gas plants with the proper insulation to be able to deal with very cold temperatures. So they had lines freezing. So it it had to do with a bunch of different things, a bunch of different factors kind of coming together in a in a perfect storm.
And the other key Texas deregulated generation. So therefore people weren't power plants that have to sit there for those hot days and cold days don't get paid. And they try to make their money on those hot days and cold days. So our system, because we haven't deregulated and by and large, and you know, some parts of Southwest Power Pool are deregulated, but being more interconnected and having an economic system that actually pays generation to be available on those hot and cold days because they can't make enough money on just those days. So consumers in Texas also face these huge price spikes. Because those generation, that generation unit that was around had to make their money on those peak days. So this deregulation of Texas and not being interconnected and not being, you know, preparing for really cold days and natural gas not being available because of the cold weather. It was just a perfect storm, so to speak, in terms of how the grid failed Texas and how we were better off in the Southwest Power Pool.
And are you going to talk more about Southwest Power Pool? So I'm glad to hear that. One of the things we hear when we talk about energy generation in Douglas County is what is the value of generating energy here that might get used elsewhere? And so I think maybe that's one of the points you're getting to is that the interconnectedness is makes us stronger as well as neighbors stronger. So I'll let you get to that when you get to it.
That's right. Great. This is a a graph. Again, this is from the EIA, from the EIA article. These graphs just show the the changes in seasonal demand. And so demand is a big, big, big part of the equation as we know. It shows that in the summertime, you basically get once a day spikes, usually in the hot part of the day. So the cooling goes goes significantly up. It changes, the equation changes a little bit in the winter where you you have that's your sort of second peak demand period after the summertime. And you could see a a little different shape. This is in the early morning when folks are getting ready to go to work and school. And then in the early evening when they come back and those are that that's that sort of double double spike on each on each day. Little bit easier to do this in April and October, a little bit harder to do it in in January and certainly hard in the in the in the summertime.
Put a real exclamation point here. I mean, electricity is one of the few, if not the only product you have to produce and consume instantaneously. Okay, because we really haven't had storage to any extent. I mean, there's some pump hydro here and there and we're talking about batteries, but because you have to produce it and use it instantaneously, the demand by consumers appearing anytime and also when the weather fits. So the whole system is built for those peaks and those peaks can be obviously are seasonal day by day. And the entire system has to be managed to be able to provide electricity. And it's we can definitely, storage can help a lot in terms of maintaining the cost. Back to the truck analogy, we have to pay for all of those trucks sitting around plus twenty percent extra to meet the peak demand. And this is also where energy efficiency by consumers can also shape the costs. So if we could do more to lower peaks through better insulation of homes, we'd be reducing winter and summer peaks too and reducing costs for everyone. So this whole demand driving the supply and the cost curves is critical because of the lack of storage of electricity historically. And hopefully over time, we can address that issue too. But until then, we're facing this need to provide supply whenever people demand.
This is Commissioner Reed. I so I want to understand better that back to one of your earlier slides about the rejected gas and we talked about heat being sort of the primary reason for that. I can you just elaborate a bit more? Because to your point about the the instantaneous production and consumption happening? I mean, if we're always producing for peak, I mean, that's just daily waste of energy that's not being it's being immediately produced. But because we don't have storage solutions, if it's not consumed at the level that it's produced, it is just wasted or rejected energy, right? Is that? I mean, maybe I'm totally off base, but that's logically what is happening in my brain and I just want to understand better.
Right, I I guess I'll say this. You don't always produce for peak, but you have to always be ready to produce for peak. If that makes sense. So that's that's the way I understand it at least.
And the wasted heat heat issue is more around the sources of generation and fossil fuels and the how efficient you are at burning a fuel. Okay, so solar and wind have different issues about variability and their efficiency, but for fossil generation and their wasted heat issue is a is more an issue of how efficiently can you burn fossil fuels and generate useful electricity versus waste heat? With, you know, you've heard about combined heat and power and other, you know, the other ways to get to seventy, eighty, ninety percent efficiency in burning fossil fuels, but most of the older plants are burning at thirty percent. So that's more on the generation side of fossil fuel use for power generation and the waste heat issue. I think in terms of the overall demand and, you know, electricity going to consumers, that's a different calculus, but we can talk more about that.
Well, I just, if you look at electric vehicles, right? Their performance is better than gas combustion because they're not wasting the energy. The energy immediately goes to the to the drive train. And, you know, gasoline really is is inefficient. So burning things is is not, I mean, you produce excess energy that's not being used. We'll stop.
This is just another perspective on and I'm going to go pretty quickly through this, but this is just another perspective on on planned adds in electrical generation capacity. I liked this graph just to show that, you know, the 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 total planned ads were around fifty four and a half gigawatts. The vast majority of that, those planned ads are are actually in solar. You could see a number of of ads as well, sort of eleven percent of the ads are are going to be in winds. A small amount of of the ad is in nuclear. That's just one plant. That's one two, two point two gigawatt plant. You can also see a bunch of battery storage add, and that's another slide that I've got in a minute. The battery storage part goes along with the the solar and the wind piece. You have to have the two because of intermittency issues that that I think we're all familiar with.
And this is additional within a single year, additional within twenty twenty three?
I think it's the planned ads. I don't know if the it I think it's it's on the on the it's on the plan. It's not in twenty twenty three. It's what's planned. Is that is that your understanding?
But one year rather than a larger. Okay, thank you.
And so do you have any? I mean, I don't expect you have charts or exact numbers off the top of your head, but like, how do how would that circle in particular look in past more recent years? You know, like, how much has solar ads or wind ads? Are those numbers consistently going up? Are they a little bit plateaued?
So the last twenty years, it's been almost all wind and natural gas. Okay. And what we're seeing more now is the solar is coming in in a much bigger way because it's more competitive. And because we've built so much wind, it's nice to add solar and what you would have seen in Kansas is a lot more solar because wind is generating at night, not that we don't need more wind, but solar is going to be needed. So what you're seeing in the whole country is that we build a lot of natural gas and wind in the last twenty years. What you're seeing is a trend for more solar and that's going to be the trend you'll see for the next ten years, in my view. And you'll see some wind, obviously, and more, you know, more wind will still be needed as as will be some more new natural gas, but you don't see new coal. And the nuclear plant is only the one nuclear plant that's being built with federal dollars in Georgia, so.
That eleven percent wind is would have been a higher number in recent years.
There's been a one for one substitution away from coal and towards wind in the state of Kansas. A third of our production is now electricity is now wind.
Just a perspective on batteries. This is planned battery storage and and this kind of pairs along with that last graph on on other other types of planned electrical ads. And I'm going to skip through and I'm going to get back to you. I did want to make a couple of points about Kansas's integrated energy system. So this is a twenty nineteen perspective. You'll remember that the US wide one was twenty twenty one. They don't act. They haven't actually compiled data for for twenty twenty and twenty twenty one for Kansas. But you'll see that it's a it's a little bit of a different picture. So winds in Kansas is is a much greater percentage of the total electrical generation capacity. You'll see that we also have a significant percentage from from our nuclear plant. Natural gas is part of the picture, but it's a smaller part of the picture for our electrical generation fleet. Instead, our natural gas goes directly to industrial processes. Full sort of full stop. Southwest Power Pool. I'm by no means an expert on the on the SWP on the SWPP. But I did want to give a perspective of what it looks like. And I've I've compiled materials for you that that source in, you know, what they are, where they are, what their role is as a as a regional transmission organization. And basically, they they bear the responsibility of reliability coordination for something on the order of a six state region. It's parts of parts of several states, but all of Kansas, all of Nebraska, all of South Dakota and North Dakota. So their job is reliability, coordination and 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 tariff administration. Anything else to say about SWPP guys?
So in terms of reliability, that that's their job to kind of manage the reliability of of what is available and what needs to come online. So they have certainly things that they are looking for in terms of new electrical generation and things that they're not looking for as they balance that. Can you talk a little bit to what they might be thinking there?
Yeah, their first issue is making sure we have enough supply to meet the demand and just we have enough in the system and in the right places to be able to have a reliable grid. And they also then manage what gets put into the grid and how much people get paid. So there's this huge, they're like the conductor. They have to kind of manage the whole system. And therefore new additions have to go through the SVP interconnection queue to determine how it would fit into the whole system. Because we have a systems approach. So SPP's role is to figure that out. And they also have to give the requirements to Evergy and others to say, okay, if you to meet reliability requirements, you have to have this much supply given the demand forecast, not only to meet your own need, but to help support the system. And so there's just the demand and supply balancing is what SPP does. And they also make sure And they also make sure, you know, when there's crises that you can buy and sell and move things around. And even when we had Storm Yuri here, we had some, you know, temporary outages, but they were voluntary to manage the system. It was not like we didn't have enough supply here. We just needed to kind of make sure everybody's light stayed on. So having an hour or two where you, you could turn things off was part of how you manage the grid. So to me, the Evergy role and the SPP role and how Evergy has to meet its supply obligation and how much credit it gets for building new wind versus new solar is kind of the, a big issue because SPP is kind of determining that new additional wind on Evergy's system don't really add a lot to reliability for Evergy and or the whole SPP. So there's a lot of like the credit accreditation for new sources is a very important part of why some of the decisions that are going to be made by Evergy in the next year or two. And just, I know we're going to be running out of time soon, but there's an all source RFP Evergy has put out a request from every, all of different sources and say, tell us what you've got. Tell us how much it's going to cost. Tell us if you can bring it online by a certain timeframe because we have needs associated with demand growth, Panasonic, others. So Evergy is going to be out there looking for resources that I'll have to, which will have gone through the SPP process to get built. So there's a lot going on here, but it is a the how Evergy and SPP work together to meet demand growth and is a key part of this conversation.
Uh, I think it's not just demand, it's also how quickly that demand can come online, correct? I mean, the different types of power generation, that they needed to come online quickly to, to meet that demand. Is that correct?
Yeah, Evergy will have clear dates when they need a project completed. Okay, so when they're doing their bids and we need X amount by this date. Right? This is why therefore which projects are already in permitting or in queues and getting those projects built in a timely fashion is critical.
I've asked a lot of questions and slowed things down somewhat. Um, are there other pieces that we haven't gotten to yet that we need to make some time for? Um, Commissioner Reed also had a question.
Yeah, I provided a, you know, this is, this will be in your packs, uh, that Kim will have, uh, again, kind of point you through this, uh, perspective on winds. Um, perspective on, uh, Kansas's generation by source. Um, and then, uh, they, they don't let me do any talks without talking a little bit about hydrogen. So a perspective on what that looks like and why that's useful. Um, but we, uh, we should not go through that today.
Also a topic possibly for another time, but, um, deep geothermal, is that a thing? Is that a possibility for Kansas?
I'm going to have to phone a friend on that. I don't actually know.
Yeah, California does it. I'm not sure how competitive it is with other sources here.
So my question was going to be on that last one, you had an open boundary mission. Sorry, I don't know where that came from. Um. Okay. That went away. That was fun. Transmission lines, I'm kind of have a lot of questions about them and I don't want to dig, dive too deep, but generally speaking, you talked about the ads and the projected energy ads to come online. With every added mi- new energy resource or capacity for it, is it a foregone conclusion that new transmission lines are going to be needed? Or is there, I mean, some, some determination for all, all types of energy developers and whether or not the current transmission lines are in the appropriate place and have the ability to help carry that energy versus, or is it true that every new energy development, whether it's a wind or solar project or, or a new nuclear plant, for example, if that, even though that doesn't seem very likely, um, are transmission lines going to come with that in order to bring those resources online?
Yes.
Any new development will need to connect to the grid. There, there'll be a short transmission. So this is different than long haul transmission to get power out of the state issue, but all new projects have to be able to demonstrate and developers will pick places to be close to transmission to minimize the cost of adding new transmission. So transmission will always be needed, but you can count on developers and SPP when doing the analysis to minimize how much new transmission is needed, that, you know, there'll be new transmission. But this is where, again, if we can use Lawrence Energy Center, like say for storage, you don't need new interconnection then too. So you can be smart about where you want to build things and add things to minimize transmission costs.
If I can rephrase Commissioner Reed's question, what is the state of our grid? Is it sufficient? Is it behind? Or do we have needs even for the energy generation that we have now? What's the state of things?
Well, I mean, so some of the things that we've been looking at with respect to energy demand are not factoring in, I mean, some of Jay's presentation of, you know, the incentives behind electrical vehicles, right? Um, that's going to increase the demand for electricity hugely, right? And I am not seeing lots of projections about that. Um, and so, you know, as we switch, as we decarbonize, we're going to have, we're going to switch to electricity generation, whatever form it takes. It's going to require transmission lines for new facilities. And, uh, that demand is going to increase. I mean, there are incentives in the Inflation Reduction Act to incentivize, you know, home solar, to incentivize electric vehicles, to incentivize electric appliances and, and energy saving appliances. But we're shifting to electricity. So thinking about how we manage that going forward is, is going to be key.
But, but we do need a lot of new transmission, especially long haul. So this, this goes back to the connecting new sources in Kansas to the grid issue versus what the US system needs in order to be able to get cleaner, lower cost electricity to other parts and their SPP is, does a good job of, you know, in the system, but how SPP then connects to MISO, the other RTO to the east and the western grid to the left. So there are what we call seam issues for large RTOs, which is where we really need transmission. So I think the big conversation that's going on is we need more transmission is to create better reliability and cleaner energy and lower cost by being able to connect the bigger grids to, uh, each other. So that's kind of the big debate on transmission is really around how do we, we need long haul transmission.
Yeah, we need to be able to sell to Chicago and Denver.
So this goes to the Grain Belt Express question and others that we deal with when we talk about a long haul transmission.
Yeah. Thank you, Commissioner Willie, for helping flush that question a bit more and I appreciate the distinction about, um, and I wasn't articulating it well, that long haul transmission line need that I understand seems, there seems to be a, a demand and, and need for um, versus sort of the, the short plugging into the, to grids already. My last question about that is if anybody knows the answer, um, who has authority over transmission lines, the, you know, the regulations, the, the permission and development of them?
In-state, it's all the KCC and
With the KCC.
Kansas Corporation Commission. And if it's been going from one state to another, then it's a federal energy regulatory commission.
So meaning an energy developer who wanted to create a wind, um, development or solar development would be going through KCC or what was the other one you said across?
Or FERC.
FERC, um, in order to basically, I mean, I'm trying to think it's sort of the, the sequence of things to, to get permission for and the ability to develop the transmission lines seems necessary before permission for and development of the actual project itself of new wind turbines or solar fields.
I think they would kind of go in parallel.
Right, can you use the mic?
They, they would go in parallel is my understanding. You would, you would, okay, we want to do a new project. So Southwest Power Pool, uh, what kind of long, long haul, uh, transmission do I need to connect into? How do I connect into that? So the planning of the project has to then coordinate with the planning of the interconnects. And that would be regulated through, um, and, and administered by the Southwest Power Pool. Then there's the, the KCC piece, and then if it's going interstate, it would be FERC is my understanding.
Thank you.
And it gets more complicated when you have merchant transmission lines where people are not having predetermined contracts and how they're going to be paid. And so, and we don't do merchant generation in Kansas, but other parts of the country do, like Illinois and so on. So if you're, how you pay for transmission and generation is another part of this whole calculus. And so you can't build anything unless you know where you're going to get money to pay for it. And so some people are willing to do it on a merchant basis and not have guarantees upfront. And others have to, in Kansas, everything's going to have some long-term contract as a way to finance a project, uh, in terms of within Kansas, in terms of both connecting new generation to the grid. Uh, long haul transmission may be merchant or have contracts. But it's, we, we, you know, we can come back to those questions.
Yeah. So one of the things we've heard a lot in, in discussion here is instead of large-scale industrial wind or large-scale industrial solar, there's more support for smaller individual scale of that solar and um, wind. Can you, can you talk about how that would impact our, our total power resources?
It shouldn't be either or, but I think for liability perspective for a utility to meet its obligations, uh, we're going to need large-scale renewables. So I think we can maybe reduce them a little bit. And we should be encouraging more onsite solar, of course. But how that fits in with electrification of transportation and growth and other things, we should be kind of looking at that. So to me, it's not an either or. For a reliable electric grid, we're going to need large-scale generation sources. Uh, on the demand side for consumers, if we can reduce peak demand through solar on a person's house and batteries in people's home, that can help, help lower that peak demand, which is also very important. So we're very interested in energy efficiency and solar on people's home as a way to lower peaks, which can hold, shape the entire system in a better way, in a lower cost way. So, but I'm of the view, and I think is that we clearly need wind and solar at large scales to replace some of the older aging power plants that will be retired. And we need to obviously add a lot of storage and I'll come back to, we have to have storage at the Lawrence Energy Center as we build out more and more of these renewables.
Right. And I mean, there's a distributional effect, right? You have, it costs a lot of money and I'm doing it right now, putting solar panels on my house, right? It's all, even though it's, you know, you've got a, uh, one third tax credit. Only the wealthy are going to be able to afford to put solar panels on their house for now, right? So it's not something that is going to meet the needs of power for the community. It's going to lower my power bill, right? Or Jay's power bill, if he were to put panels on. It's not going to meet our needs.
The other piece of that is that, um, even though like the solar panels on my house are connected to the grid and they will feed back onto the grid power that we don't use, even though we don't get paid much for it. Um, but in a power outage, that production has to shut down. It cannot feed back onto the grid if the, if the grid is down. And that is because of first responders and energy companies that have to come and fix those lines. They can't have energy trickling back onto them at that time. So all of those home generation systems are made to cut out during a power outage. Seems a little counterintuitive, but that's one of the reasons why distributed generation, as we do it currently, does not greatly impact the grid itself.
Okay, well, we've reached what is usually the limit of our work sessions. Thank you to our guests for being here, for sharing all this information with us. Unless commissioners have other comments or questions, always appreciate that. We will adjourn until our five-thirty business meeting.